What I do. I love you to the spirit of the song. It's everybody here with you. You're just going. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got bigger. But I've never said no. I've never seen the thing. You know, I like it. It's a big, long. I see. 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 I won't say no problem. David, remember, I also have the motion. Uh. Right. Actually, so. Yeah. I was. I was. This one. Why? 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 Good. That way to get hurt. Yeah. I got to do this thing. So, so we. So, this county is. Well, they haven't made. They're. The word. I think. I think. They was supposed to. And you. You. I think. They don't. They don't. They don't get it either way. Oh, isn't that. I did. I didn't. I didn't. I mean. I got. I mean. I mean. He's good. He's good. That's probably one of their best. My bad. Everybody. I was not done. I mean, I've got. I mean, I. Because they're on. That one. But what I wanted was. All those. You. Yeah. Everybody. Everybody. I don't know about. I don't know. I'm. 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 Yeah. I'm. Okay. I took. I took. I don't know about. I don't know about. I don't know about. I don't know about. Yeah. I think. I heard. Okay. I took. I took. I don't know. People. I mean. I mean. What's wrong with. I mean. I mean. I mean. It was very good. We do. Those. You. So, did you, uh? What is your name? Just name. I. I call me. There ain't no. There ain't. There ain't. There ain't. There ain't. I mean. We're gonna. Try to do one day. I'm. 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 I know. That's fair. She. That's. That's. I mean. You know. And. 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 Everybody. This. Yeah. This. Anything. Cannot. Cannot. Either. Or somebody. Either way. Very. Very. Back for another round? Yeah. Somebody just. I love you guys. Yeah. It's. It's. It was. It was. Yeah. Yeah. It was. That was one of those. Between them and. I've never seen. I told my. I'm. I'm. Everybody. It made me feel even better about us. You want us to. I don't know why they were all. I mean. And now. You know. You were. It's. It's. Because that's. If I were. Like. Yes. It's. 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 That was one of those. Between them and. I've never seen. So. I'm. 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 Everybody. It made me feel even better about us. You want us to. I don't know why they were all. I mean. And now. You know. You were. It's. 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 Because that's. If I were. Like. Yes. It's. 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 Yes. It's. 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 I've seen those. I've. 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 It's. 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 We feel. The. But. Hello. It's. A storm. All of these. It's. 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 Much. In. The. It's. No. This. This. It's. 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 A large. You. You know. It's. 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 One. One. I don't know. Which is coming. Bit. With. It needs. It needs. I'd like to welcome everybody to the. 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 Public hearing. Uh, February eleventh. Twenty twenty-five at six P M. We will now open the public hearing. This public hearing is regarding. House Bill five eighty-one floating homestead exemption. Uh, before we start. The meeting, I'm gonna make a couple remarks real quick. Uh, regarding questions or comments. Uh, before you. I'd like to announce that each citizen is allowed to approach the commission and will be allotted three minutes to speak. Uh, speakers should address the remarks to the chairman and/or the presenter, which tonight will be, uh, Mr. Gary Capelier. The commission will address comments and questions once the public hearing is closed. And we will welcome all comments for the. From the public and ask, remain respectful of others. Uh, obviously, we don't have a room full of people tonight, so it'll be a little bit more friendlier than it was last time, which was fine last time also. We sort of let you sit in your seat and make comments, and that's fine. One thing we did not do in the last public meeting was ask people to state their name and address for the record. This just gives us us a log for minutes, so when it gets filed, we'll know who made the comments and why. Uh, because we do try to track those. So, with that being said, we'll now open the public hearing. Some of you are are repeats from the first meeting, and I'm glad you made it back, because there'll be a few changes, uh, to tonight's presentation. Uh, Mr. Capelier is here, uh, to do his part, and then I have a few things I want to go over, uh, that we we told the public we would do, and we have done those, so we'll announce those in a little bit. But, uh, Mr. Capelier.
Good evening. H B five eighty-one. Uh, there's a lot of. I hope we cleared it up last meeting on some of the rumors that I've been going around, but this exemption is in addition to all the current local exemptions that are out there. If you're currently receiving a S one or over seventy or anything like that, this does not replace that exemption. This does not remove that exemption. You will still receive. That exemption.
Okay.
I was using it. I'm sorry. I was saying, we got handouts here. All right. Uh, and by the way, Gary, there is people online at a watch party over in Culver, so if you can, try to stay near the microphone so they can hear.
Okay. Um, so this is in addition to whatever home stays you're currently receiving. Um, trying to think if. There's any other ones. Any other rumors you've heard after you can ask some questions on our. So, the other changes that come through five eighty-one is this does remove the estimated tax bill from the annual assessment notice. Um. It was an issue. That's the origin. What caused this house bill originally? Uh, there was a lot of issues with it. The estimated tax taxes on the assessment notice were never accurate, um, because when the assessment notice goes out, none of the taxing authorities have set their miller rate at that point, so the miller rate is based off the previous year's miller rate. So, people get their assessment notice, they expect their bill is gonna be what it shows on the assessment notice, and it never was. So, it caused a lot of confusion, so this was originally to try and clear that up. Um, instead of the estimated tax bill being on there now, there will now be an estimated real, uh, miller rollback rate, which is what each one of the taxing authorities will have to roll their miller rate back in order to not increase their taxes on it. Um, this bill also removes the one-year sale toll that went on properties when you purchased it. Um, previously, Senate Bill three forty-six. Um, three forty-six. Whenever you purchase a property, you got a sale toll on the property. If the purchase price was lower than our value, if not, it's just same as our value. This house bill takes that away. It also states that an appeal on the property no longer receives, um, a three-year hold automatically. It used to be if you appealed the property and you were present during the appeal, um, you would get a three-year hold from the V O E, uh, Board of Equalization. Um, now, you must win the appeal in some sort of fashion. The Board of Equalization must lower your value from the Board of Assessors' initial value in order for you to receive your three-year hold. Um, this also codified, uh, codified that the Board of Assessors, uh, must reappraise property every three years, and also gives the Board of Assessors authority to appeal state sales ratios.
Hey, Gary, those are not. There's no opt-out on this.
Yeah. These. These are set no matter if the taxing authorities opt in or opt out of the portion of H B five eighty-one that they're able to. These will still pay the fee.
Can we ask questions as you proceed, or should we wait till we're finished?
I don't know. I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, I have a question about the appeals. If you don't have the estimated taxes, will it change the appeal cutoff date for the taxes?
No, the appeal deadline is always forty-five days from when the notice goes out. Um, and the estimated tax bill on there, that was never, and that was another reason for them wanting to cut it out. Your tax bill is never an appealable item. Um, you can only appeal uniformity, valuation, the value that's put on it, but you can't appeal the actual tax bill. A lot of people would see that and want to appeal their taxes, but it's not an actual appealable offense. So, but it doesn't change the the deadline for a pie, uh, filing any of those appeals.
Gary, one quick thing. Sir, if you don't mind, give us your name and address for the record.
Name is David Carey, seventy-six, Mano in Court, home.
Thank you.
And that's. Pardon?
Price nine.
And I'm just gonna go over some of the the options for opting, some of the possible outcomes for opting in or out of H B five eighty-one. Again, this is not a recommendation. I'm just stating some of the outcomes that would come from either opting out or staying in. And that's another. One of the other things I was gonna address is. Currently, every county, every municipality in the state of Georgia is already in this H B five eighty-one, uh, the floating homestead. When it was passed into legislation, it automatically, uh, opted a hundred and fifty-nine counties and all municipalities, and you have to actually opt out of it in order to not be in it. Um, the ads that you've seen in the papers from either the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Education or any of the cities, where the wording is the intent to opt out of five eighty-one, that was written, that language was written specifically in the House bill. It was mandated by this bill that it has to be worded that way. It's not necessarily that any of those taxing authorities, the Board of Commissioners included, have already made up their mind that they are opting out. It's the way the state made them word it, and the taxing authorities holding these meetings for the potential of opting out is because the deadline to opt out is so limited that it has to be held in a certain timeframe. Um, the decision. This was put on, kind of, just put on everybody January first of when you can start. Um. Start discussions on it, and you had to do, uh, digest impact studies, uh, for each of the municipalities on the taxing authorities. You had to figure out how it was gonna affect you. You have to hold your three public hearings in that timeframe. You have to advertise it in that timeframe.
The only reason you have to have these meetings is you are considering opting out.
You're leaving that door open to opt out.
If you're not. If you're not considering opting out, there is not three meetings.
That is correct. So, and I just wanted to clear that. That doesn't mean any of the taxing authorities. And I haven't spoken to all of them, so I don't know. It's just. It just doesn't mean that they've already made their decision to opt out. This is just leaving the door open.
Name and address right quick for the record.
Scotty Chatham, three five five Chandler Road.
So, some of the outcomes for opting out is it gives local control. They're able to maintain local control over tax policy, and it maintains flexibility for future Board of Commissioners or, uh, in this case, Board of Commissioners. Uh, the financial.
What kind of flexibility? You you leave open-ended when you put flexibility. And to lay all the facts out.
Well, kind of.
Are you flexible for?
Kind of going down to maintain our, the local ability to respond to local needs and crises. If this board opts in, there's no opting, or if this board decides to not opt out, excuse me, there's no opting out later. So, future boards that may have wanted to opt out no longer have that decision, and if a local need comes up where, or there's a need to increase the revenue collected by the county to, say, pave a road, um, you're gonna have to increase the miller rate substantially in order to.
But at the same time, there's no option to opt in in the future by future boards either.
There are. There's through local options.
To opt in.
Not to opt in to five eighty-one.
That's what I'm saying. You're either in or out, so if you're. If you're telling me I'm handcuffing the board in the future, it's both ways. What if the next board won't?
Because it's not both ways. You're not able to opt into five eighty-one in the future, but you can create a local version that is roughly exactly the same. It's just not ran by the state. You can do a local floating homestead option where you, if they, if the board wanted to, they could word it exactly how this is. It's just controlled locally inside the state. Um, but the exemption could be the same. You could have the same outcome if you wanted. It was just ran through local taxing authorities.
Yeah. But it still leaves you, uh, Gary and and Scotty, but it still leaves you the flexibility to make all the other decisions still in-house versus letting the state mandate those decisions for you. And that's what we've seen throughout the state of Georgia so far. You can Google, uh, this randomly through the state of Georgia, and you'll see a lot of counties that's opting out because their local that they already have in place is better than or or as the same. That's what the state has, but yet they still contain their local control.
Yeah, some of the, some of the counties or taxing authorities already have a local floating homestead that is actually better than this house bill five eighty-one.
There's a county in Georgia that locks your baggage. There's nothing much better than your property.
I don't know how they have it worded specifically. It may not be a freeze-on-value, but the exemption may be so much that it's actually saves more than what the typical taxpayer would save on this. Basically, if they're not, if that county isn't opting out of that one, they would still abide by these rules, but they would say, okay, they would have to look at each property individually and say, okay, on this property, five eighty-one is a bigger benefit to this taxpayer than our local option. So, they're gonna get the five eighty-one benefit instead of the local one.
But that's the problem we're running into, is we have too many individuals rather than everybody being treated the same. When you leave it to a county, I may not get the same benefit the next one does, whether you elect it or not. That's how it works. When you've got it written in a policy straight across the board, everybody is locked at their value. That. That is how it is.
You are correct in your statement. You're right about the locking, and this was where the, this is where I personally, I'm gonna speak to me personally, not the Board of Commissioners. This is where the state failed. They thought that the single shoe size hit everybody, and when they built this bill around Metro Atlanta, they did not realize, and you, we've all seen since our last meeting, we've seen Senator Goode come out and do a fifty-two-minute presentation and and used a lot of words loosely, as this will benefit all homeowners, when that's obviously not true. It's for homestead homeowners, but when they built that bill with the small circle of people in the room was coming from prominent counties with very high sales tax, potentially low, uh, revenues on on taxpayer households, but yet tried to compare a Hall County or a DeKalb County or a Gwinnett County to a Tiff County, Madison County, or an Overcooke County was a very unfair statement.
That's true, but Madison County's wanting new business, correct?
Madison County is open for business, yes.
Okay. Well, why not tax the business and let every person who owns a home reap the rewards of my tax? Value ain't going up. You're gonna raise your miller rate, you're gonna get your money either way, but what you're doing, you're saying, hey, we're gonna reward the business. We're not gonna raise the miller rate. We're gonna help you out, but Miss Sarah Jane, who's lived here seventy years, basically give her the finger. That's not.
Yeah, sir. Just for clarity on that, so one of the thought processes behind this bill, because I've been talking to a lot of people at the Capitol, somehow they were under the illusion that this was gonna create uniformity, and it actually does just the opposite of uniformity. This is probably the worst thing you've ever come about when it's gonna create uniformity across the board. Um, there's where those homesteads locally could be put in place to help those seniors, but just like anything else, we all know there's a lot of money that's pulled from, and if you relieve it from one, you're gonna take more from the other. That's the inevitable answer. The state's telling you that clearly in their explanations, and they really don't care.
So, why don't let us that county just give it to the homeowners?
We could. That's what we're saying.
That's his needs.
That's why we're having these meetings, to hear what the public want to hear, I mean, what what they want us to hear.
Yeah.
To to take into account for what we may do.
What they voted. You heard.
Well, we've already done the math on the people's vote, and obviously.
I do the math, too, to third, just to win the vote.
I need that point, War here. Yeah. Because, you know, we, we need to continue with the presentation. You're asking questions.
Yeah.
But really, you should probably hold some of this, your points that you're making to that three-minute presentation at the end, so that we can get through some of this, if you don't mind.
Okay, because some of the questions you had are are coming up, and like your question about the, uh, the rollback, this still allows the local ability to respond to rising property values to additional local homesteads, maybe not the five eighty-one, but, um, a local homestead that is similar or whatever the needs are for citizens at that time, um, and also for miller rate rollbacks. Um, and again, this isn't a recommendation. I'm just trying to lay out all the possibilities for you so y'all can make an informed, uh, decision. Potential outcomes for opting, for staying opted in. Uh, property values will be frozen. Uh, they can only increase by the consumer price index, which is the rate of inflation, which would be determined, uh, by the state, um, or any substantial changes to the property. Um, you add in addition to your house or a new garage, or you remove something off of the property. Again, the floating homestead is in addition to any local homesteads that are already in place. You won't. It's not a one or the other. Um, opting in or opting out wouldn't remove you from anything you're currently receiving. Um, it could make the local taxing authorities, if opted in, uh, more dependent on state, uh, funding to offset any revenue losses. Some additional information on five eighty-one. Uh, as of now, there's no limit on the amount of acres included on the homestead parcel. There are several, um, amendments that are potentially coming through, uh, for next year, and I believe that is one of them. Um, fi- a five-acre limit.
That's that's the top, yes.
Yeah, it is one of supposedly what's coming through. Um, the compounded value plus consumer price index increases and miller rate increases could potentially, well, it will raise taxes on, uh, individuals. Agricultural properties could receive a, if they're in conservation, will receive a three percent conservation value increase in addition to the C P I increase and miller rate increase. Um, it would result in a miller rate increase each year, and which would deter possible commercial or industrial growth, um, from counties who have a floating homestead versus counties that don't. Um, you're talking about wanting to get commercial businesses in to possibly offset, uh, tax bill on property owners. Uh, a very high miller rate may persuade, uh, commercial properties or industrial properties from wanting to come into this county versus another one who has a smaller miller rate, um, because they're not gonna receive the exemption, so if you're trying to get industrial growth into your county to offset tax bills on property owners, this may be driving back into a county who may have opted out. Once owners sell their homes, property taxes would be calculated according to the property's actual current value, meaning that new homeowners would not see any discounts when they buy a home. Landlords also do not qualify for the exemption. Properties directly adjoining one another could vary wildly and assess taxable values. Um, if you had two houses that are very similar, identical, and one of them was on, uh, the homestead free for ten years, and this other one just sold it. If he got the free that are two hundred thousand dollar value, and that's what they originally were, this one's now at, say, five hundred thousand, because they just sold, even though they're identical houses, this one, the new owner would be paying taxes on five hundred thousand dollar value, and the old owner would be paying it on two hundred thousand dollar value, which would just create a lot of, uh, inequity in between neighbors. This new floating homestead exemption is in addition to the current local exemption. Uh, taxes do not disappear, they only shift. Each of the taxing authorities, uh, need what they need for their budget. Uh, the only shift, the taxes are shifted from homestead property to other property types, i.e. commercial, agricultural, industrial, or residential non-homestead. It's important to remember that property tax is usually funded a significant part of budgets for, uh, local municipalities, counties, and school districts. When you start capping, uh, the revenue, the revenue has to come from somewhere else. And this is how the amendment appear on the ballot. Um. I'll read it out, but it weeds out, leaves kind of a lot to the imagination. It says, shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in the assessed value of homesteads, so which any county consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out of upon completion of certain procedures. This is an impact study that was done on the miller rate. The, in the two thousand and twenty-one column, that, uh, one point zero one three billion, that's the total value of all homesteaded properties. The. The. The top line in twenty twenty-two is, uh, one point zero four three mil, uh, billions. That is the homesteaded value from the previous year plus C P I. Which is, for this purpose, we calculated that three percent. That's not necessarily what it's gonna be. Um, that's gonna be determined by the state, but for this exercise, we get to that three percent. The value underneath that, the hundred and eighteen million, that is the new homesteaded, uh, value property that just applied for a homestead in twenty twenty-two. That was the total value for that. And then the one point one six, that is. And then the 1.16, that is basically the homesteaded plus CPI value plus the new homestead. Let me see the figure break down for 23 and 24. Uh, the, uh, personal, the row below that is the personal property exemption loss, um, I'm gonna touch briefly on that, that was a separate House Bill, House Bill 808, um, it increased the personal property, um, exemption from 7,500 to 20,000, so any boat or business that's under 20,000 will no longer be subject to taxes. So that previous slide includes the loss in revenue from, basically in 2022, that's the total loss from the increase from 7,500 to 20,000.
Okay, I got one more question, I don't want to interrupt. Do you have, is there any way to show the public what the potential offset would be if you raised the millage rate on all the other properties versus what you lost from the homestead? Because eventually, that's what you'd have to do, is raise the millage rate, so every other property, how much money would it increase, and at the same time, would it equal out to a debt of zero?
So one mill today is around 2.6 million.
1.3.
I was like, 1.6?
1.3.
1.3, sorry.
But that's on all properties, not just?
That's just a mill, if you had to increase the millage rate, one mill would equal 1.3, so in 2022, if you went up, you, the board would have probably went up 3/4 of a mill, the next year would have to go up to about a mill and a half, and the next year, it's gonna go up a full two mills.
Yeah.
But you would have to add those together, because if you do 22, 23, and 24, then you're talking about two, uh, three, four, about, about four and a half mill increase in just a three, three-year span.
But would it all, does it offset that? Is it still?
That's just to break it back even.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On this, I'm sorry, I, I get what you're saying now, on this, um, spreadsheet, the estimated mill to recoup, uh, the first year would be almost a mill, the second year would be 1.8, the third year in 2024 would be 2.5, that's what the millage rate would have to increase in order to offset the revenue loss.
Homestead.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Um, it, the revenue loss being, the average homestead loss is per parcel, for 22, it was estimated around $142 per parcel, um, with the total revenue loss coming up to 935,000, and then the estimated mill to recoup, that almost that 0.9 would be what it would have to raise in order to recoup that total $935,000 loss.
I'll make a, make a comment on this statement you just made.
Yes, sir.
You, you may not have said it just like you wanted to, but the way I, the way I heard it, uh, indicated that the millage rate increase would only be on the properties.
No, it'll be across the board.
It would be.
But everybody else will be at market value, and your homestead will be locked, so it will affect them more than it will your homestead lock, because you're only going up.
Only on their cap value.
So your commercial property may double in value, so if you raise 2.5 mill, they're paying way more than they did two years ago, whereas your homestead is paying a smaller percentage.
And that's another scary thing that may drive commercial or farmers potentially out, is if they're not receiving, uh, that capped CPI, then you have to raise that millage rate, they're getting, they're increasing value plus the increase in millage rate, and it's gonna hit them, like you said, harder than.
Eventually, you just gotta decide, do you want homeowners or business?
Just for that math, by the way, I think right now, we're at 9.1, our current millage rate's 9.1.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, 9.1, so just with the three-year period projections, we'd be somewhere around, uh, 15 and a half mills, and not getting in the Board of Education.
But that's where they are already.
Yeah, that's sort of where the Court of Education would top out, at 20-mill cap, they're set. If they're at 16.1, they'll cap out in the first three years, and they can't do anything else forever, infinity. So, okay, yeah, go ahead, Gary.
I kinda touched on this because of the previous slide, this, this talks about H08 and the possible, the impact that it would have with, in combination with 581, um, the additional loss from this exemption could already cause some taxing authorities, see that the impact on the county, uh, from the, um, increased exemption amount in personal property wasn't that big of a hit, um, it may affect some of the municipalities a little bit more than the county, though, if they have a lot of boats or businesses, small businesses in their taxing authority, it may affect them more. This is the H08, uh, the 808 impact, uh, in 2021, the, that first row, the total value for everything under 20,000 is 7.1 million. The total value for the old exemption, which was 7, uh, 7,500, was 3.3 million, so the difference in that increase for, for that particular year was 3.8 million in total value. You see how it breaks down, in 2022, the difference between the exemptions is almost 4 million, and that equates to just under 18,000 in revenue loss for the county, if it had been implemented in 2021. This is, um, a breakdown of the revenues from real property for each one of those years. Uh, this revenue, as collected from the Board of Commissioners, has held, held steady, um, it equates to roughly half of their total revenue. There's other revenue that's collected through building permits, um, court fees, uh, stuff of that nature.
Gary, I wanna point out to every one in the room to please pay attention to that bottom slide, look at those numbers very carefully, because we, some of you, not, not you, but I don't know who's here, if you're not on Facebook, I, I assume everybody from Facebook's here tonight, but I wanted them to see the actual dollar amounts and the increases to Board of Commissioners while everybody's taxes are going up, please realize the increase to the county's bottom line, it's very, very minimal. Keep that in mind, those numbers are very, very important. And for the, I should've done this beginning, Gary, and I apologize, some of you are not in the, haven't been here before, may I not apologize, the reason we're using the numbers from 2021, 2022, 23, and 24, is because those are the only factual numbers we have to go by, and the Department of Revenue told us to use our best guess, because they don't know, the only thing they do know is we're gonna base it off CPI, and the only explanation they can say would just go back and look at three years of the previous estimate 3% CPI, so that's what we've done, so that's why you're seeing these old numbers.
Yeah, these figures could change drastically depending on what the CPI is and what the values do in future years, what inflation is gonna do.
Yes, sir, you got a question for Gary?
Yeah, yeah. David Ayton, 108, Word of Way.
I'm sorry, I missed your name, what's your last name?
Ayton, A-y-t-o-n. So, am I interpreting this correctly, that even though the housing values have bought up according to those years, uh, you adjusted your millage, uh, to?
Yes.
Basically, to not overtaxes?
Correct. Our, our goal each year has been to not collect one more penny than we did the year before, if we met our budget.
So if your bill, I kinda get what you're getting at, if your bill has gone up, it's not necessarily because of increase in value, it's because they, as far as from the county portion, they have rolled back their millage rate to offset that increase.
Okay.
The other taxing authorities that you may fall under, if you're inside the city limits or the IDA or the school board, if they get rolled back their millage rate equally to the increase in values, then that means your tax bill will go up.
Okay. Sir, I think you had a question just a second ago, if you'd like to go ahead and ask me.
I just wonder why, you know, the, if, this is, James Ashworth, by the way, 2756 Hudson River First Road, Danielsville, uh, I just wonder why running the county that goes up, cost goes up faster than inflation, and why it would be a problem with this, with the tagging the property values to inflation, because you're gonna have new houses come in, and they're gonna, they, uh, they're gonna be assessed at a higher value by soon, because housing prices are going up faster than the general inflation rate, it seems to me you should have increasing revenue from that.
Good question, um, Gary, you might wanna try to take it in just a second, but one thing I want to say again, look at the bottom of that screen, so we, while you say the government's increasing the spending part, we actually are showing you right there that we're actually not increasing hardly any on the income side.
Well, that's just an average, and not.
No, that's, these are, these are the real numbers, these are.
Well, I know that, but I mean, some properties do better than others, depending on how, what houses are being built in your neighborhood and stuff.
Yeah, those are based off market sales, which we don't have any control over whatsoever.
And, and a lot of this stuff is state mandated.
Thank you.
Like, um, with the property values, the state, all that's determined by the code section, we have to be within a certain percentage of what those values are for each year, um, state comes in and audits us every year, a perfect ratio, and the state of Georgia, your tax at 40% of your total value, so when they come in and do their audit, if you're at a 40, then your values are perfect, that means the values that we have placed on the properties are dead on with, if the property's sold for 100,000, we've got 100,000 on it. If you're under 40, that means your values are low, over 40, your values are high. The acceptable range is between 36 and 44%, anything outside of that, so if you fall below 36, if we, if our, the property valuation office, if we decided to not increase value to match the sales, and the county's ratios fell down to a, a 33%, the public utilities are taxed at whatever our ratio comes back at, the property owners still pay taxes at 40%, but your CSX, your Georgia Power, all of your, uh, public utilities, they're taxed at whatever our state ratio came at, so they would pay at a lower amount, so the taxing authority would have to, and if, if we didn't come into compliance, the state would fine us $5, please.
$5.
$5 per parcel, for every parcel in the county, until you come into compliance, so they're saying, okay, you're still gonna have to come into compliance, which means you're still gonna have to raise values, but you're also gonna have to pay this fine, you're also gonna have public utility loss, which just means the taxing authorities are gonna have to raise the millage rate even more to accommodate for all those additional fees and penalties and loss from the public utility.
From the individual, point of view of the individual, if you bought a place out of the country, you've lived there 30 years like we have, and suddenly they start building all these nice houses all around your neighborhood, well, your property values of mine have just shot up a tremendous amount, and which is causing my taxes to go up, but my income only goes up with inflation rate because I'm retired, so that, that is a real problem, and I know there's inequities about somebody living next door to somebody else, but that is the appealing parts of this bill from my point of view, it can't go up any more than the inflation rate.
And, and I agree, I'm a property owner in the county too, I agree, I, I get that, it's an exemption to, to property owners, one thing that does, is concerning is some of the gray areas in this, and it being state-run versus, I would like, personally, I would like to see a local option be presented, that was a benefit to the tax.
I would like to see that, too.
Mr. James, what did you say your last name was?
Ashworth, A-S-H-W-O-R-T.
Thank you.
Because, and, and it was referenced, the interview with, uh, Senator Goode, um, and in the, the interviewer, I know at one point, around the 20-minute mark, 21-minute mark, um, he asked, you know, what to protect the citizens from, um, a potential amendment down the line coming to 581 that's gonna be a detriment to them rather than a benefit, and he kind of didn't answer it, because there's not. Um, the, the actual resolution has to be voted on, that's the, the Resolution 1021 that he referenced earlier, but any addendums, is that the right word for it?
Yeah.
Or amendments that are added to it, such as the five-acre change, that doesn't come to, um.
A referendum.
To a referendum to be voted on, so it could potentially be a change that isn't to the benefit of the property owners later on. I'm not saying that's gonna be the case, but it may be something where a potential amendment gets discussed that is a benefit to a lot of metro areas, but isn't, isn't a benefit to some of the rural areas, uh, that could be detrimental to some of the rural areas. And again, another thing that was discussed is talking about it's just a cap on future revenue, that there's not gonna be any current loss in revenue. In cases where the taxing authorities have rolled back their millage rate to offset those increases, and there's not a big play in budget, uh, where they're collecting a bunch of, they got a bunch of stuff in the, in the bank, um, the addition to FOST in the bill kinda negates that statement, I, I feel like, uh, there's not gonna be any loss in current revenue, that there's not gonna be any loss in current revenue to any of the municipalities, any of the taxing authorities, then why is the FOST option put into this bill? The FOST is the local option sales tax that has to be voted in, first of all, which may not get voted in, but if it gets voted in, it's specifically designed to offset millage rate, to, for a millage rate rollback, to offset increases that would be, be from millage rate increases. If there's not gonna be any loss in revenue, then I don't know why that would be put in there.
Are we already at our cap for, for the FOST?
So the FOST is exempt from what I'm being, from what we've seen, I don't, I'm not trying to be overly, overly dramatic, but the state, they ain't got a good answer, I'm sorry, call anybody you want, nope, they're gonna give you every different, you talk to 550, you got five different answers, I'm being serious, because I've talked to five of them, and none of them told me the same story. The FOST is not gonna fall under the same rules as SPOSH, T-SPOSH, and LOST, they're just gonna let that be a floating one out there by itself, it's not conditions, uh, which would take us to 9 cents sales tax. In that, Senator Goode, this is the Senate Minority, Senate Majority Leader now, in this video that we're referencing, he was sharing on Facebook, said, "The reason we put the FOST in it is because you'll make plenty of money off FOST, and it'll offset any kind of loss revenue you're gonna get." Well, let me tell you about lost revenue in our county, the SPOSH, the LOST, and the T-SPOSH brings in two, it's about 2.5, about 2.5 million a year in that one penny sales tax per year. Well, by the third year of opting in, we're already gonna have a bigger debt than FOST can keep up with, just in three, the third year in, so for him to make that kind of statement from his home county, a Fannin County, which he bragged on Fannin, Flair's full, the tourist attractions, the second homes, it may benefit, but here, those people that pass through that has those second homes, that comes to the mountains of Blue Ridge to enjoy the weather during cooler times during the summer, pays that extra revenue, then goes home, Madison County don't have that, we don't have a tourist attraction that brings in people that can spend it, so that one penny sales tax, while we save you on taxes here, we're just dipping it out of your other pocket in the sales tax.
It's actually not even my option for you, because the Board of Education's up and out.
Well, it's, it's not included, they're not included in FOST at all, whether they are out.
Are they in or out?
The municipality, it's an all-in, all-out, as far as the county and the municipalities, the school board doesn't affect any of that.
They won't get the collection.
So, to Gary's point just a second ago, if this was such a fine idea, why was the FOST even introduced? If it was such a fine idea, why did the House have to put stipulations on it?
But that, that's the same, same thing.
If it's such a fine idea, why can't you answer the question, okay, we're gonna seal the deal, because when you opt in, it's forever, and we're not gonna change it forever, because he wouldn't do that, the state can do that. Here's the thing about local government, all right, you can walk in my office and talk to me about your tax bill, you can walk in the Tax Commissioner's office, talk about your tax bill, you walk in, Secretary Fraser, Deputy Fraser, you can come in my office, Matt, you can come in my office and potentially hit me right up until the sheriff gets here, you're not gonna get that treatment at the state, they're not even gonna. going to get that treatment at the state. They're not even going to turn your phone off. Call the Department of Revenue and ask questions. See, I'm going to fix you a good answer. Just to be honest. You want local control or you want state control? That is the real topic about this, more so than homeowners and anybody else. The control is what are you giving up? What is the government overreach going to look like and where does it stop? That's the main point. But go ahead.
And again, I'm not advocating for it either way. My given recommendation. I would like to see some taxpayer relief. I just don't know if this is the best option. There's with it being controlled by the state and I don't like the idea of a one-size-fits-all if it's good for the metros, it's good for the rural. A lot of times, most of the time, that's not the case. And this is a one-size-fits-all. There's any other questions for me or for the board?
I got one.
I got one that. Just a real quick, just a real quick. Is this published, what you presented?
Yes.
I believe it's on the.
It's on the.
It's on the, okay.
It's under Public Announcements on top left-hand screen.
And that's all I had.
Robin and I have our cards here. If y'all have any questions, you can email us or call us, and I'd be happy to email you the presentation.
One quick question.
I talk too much anyway. But I believe it's down.
Hey, let him go ahead. Let him go ahead. Just one quick question. What are the chances of a of a local exemption being voted in?
That would not be a.
There'd be a question more for you.
Can someone come?
I'll take that one. If you're opt out, could you knock?
Just so anyone knows, I'm not playing on my phone. This is comments coming out in Calvert with questions because like I said, there's a watch party over there under the current mandate deadline. Yeah.
All right. So if you're willing to do it locally, and not nothing to get shot, y'all have done a great job. But they had fifty years to relieve these people. Can you put a plan in place and show the public you were giving a homeowner or something before you opt out rather than throw all the homeowners out who wanted in to begin with? Then you can appease both sides.
I'm I'm you. I want to agree with you again, again. Here lies the problem. The state give us from January one until March first.
But the people give you fifty years and let them.
Well, I agree with that. I agree. So there is talks already begun. It started about six months ago of a potential senior discount for school taxes. We've already tossed around ideas of what certain things will look like for certain age groups or certain income ratios for exemptions. We are looking at the possibilities. Now, keep in mind, fifty years ago, we didn't have four years of the current administration, our previous administration.
Oh, I agree.
Called in thirty-seven percent inflation. We're not trying to get off on that game. That's not even what I'm trying to talk about. But that we're here because of this. So one thing that Mr. Gary did not allude to a minute ago, and I said this to the last group of people that was here, and I want to say it to you guys.
He said, sir.
Two years ago, hey, hey, talk to me, not to him. I got to be able to talk. You got to be able to hear. So two years ago, the state disqualified one hundred and nineteen Georgia counties for not charging enough tax. Fact. Fact. We request, we was one of them who got disqualified for not charging enough tax two years ago, twenty-two. So we asked for the investigation. We were the first county to get the investigation. While we were disqualified. You know what Department of Revenue told us? Well, we ain't real sure, but we think we may have messed up the numbers. That's billions of dollars that they messed up for lots of counties throughout Georgia. And now we're talking about, we're already in. We're in, okay? We're not talking about opting in. We're already in. We're talking about opting out to protect them from messing up again. The question I got from Calvert just now was, here's something that changed this week. We got an email. I don't know if it's a typo, saying that the opt-out process may be extended until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. So if you don't think the state still ain't got their ducks in a row, we had an option last meeting, which was two weeks ago, that there was coming before the House to potentially extend the deadline to May thirty-first instead of March first, to give it two more months. And what's really happening? The Capitol is losing their minds because this is falling apart all over the state of Georgia. So now they're saying, okay, we're going to we're going to just increase the opt-out period. Now, we don't know what that looks like because it was just in an email of something that's going to be brought to the House floor. One of the other things that's going to be to the House floor is that your local representation will opt us in no matter what our decision is. That is another talk that's being said at the Capitol during session right now. Another talk that's being talked about at the Capitol right now is, God, I forgot. I'm sorry. There's so much going on right now at the Capitol with them parties just playing each other. They don't know what's going on, but you have to give us a deadline, a hard deadline. And that's March first. You better let us know something. Before March first. That's the only thing that they have to all agree on at this point. But that may change also.
Now, we do currently have three senior local homestead exemptions with with the L-five only being about four or five years old. So so, I mean, there are local homesteads that we have for seniors, starting at age sixty-two. Sixty-two actually has an income requirement, and then sixty-five has no income requirement, and seventy has the L-five.
Yeah. So please, if you if you're not fully aware of what you are eligible for, please come down and talk to the Tax Commissioner and see what you do qualify for, because there is things out there. The school.
You can go to his website. He has a tax pamphlet on there that explains all those on there. Also, there's an additional disabled veteran homestead exemption. So there's information online for those.
And on the county website, there's pamphlets outside of our office, some of the Department of Revenue website, there's where you can just give us a call if you have questions.
All right. So is there any question, any more questions for Mr. Capelier on his presentation tonight?
Yes, sir. I just got a question. Not for him. He did a great job.
Name and address, sir.
Steve May.
Oh, yes.
Eight-two-five Miller-Mattrey, Daniel's view. Anyway, nothing with him. He did a great job. I just got a question. I just want you all, I want to opt out. I don't want the state running anything. I can come to all you fellows. We're not, we're here for a reason. I can be here. I can't get a hold of camp or I can't get a hold of those people. I appreciate what you're saying. The other thing I'm saying is, are you in a deficit? I know all these numbers and all this stuff. It's what what's happening is that you have a problem with tax revenue right now because we talked about, I was here the first meeting.
Yeah.
And we had the most corrupt administration and federal government we've ever had, and the inflation rate went crazy. I think we need patience. You're going to save your money on your school bus. I know you said you had something about the insurance and mandated insurance for school teachers. I think the revenue, if we can get fuel prices back down, that'll pay for that easy.
I'm going to go over some numbers in just a minute that we pulled together for everybody. We wanted to show, I wanted to take it a step further than we've done in the last one. And that was to show some of the mandate costs. But before I do that, is there any questions for the Board of Commissioners?
Oh, one more question.
Yes, we're going.
It's off topic. What's with all, what's with the drones flying around my place?
They're not mine. All right. They're not the county's.
Can we shoot them out of the sky?
I can't say that. I'm on recording, but I don't go on to the.
Every night for the last thirty days, it's been two, there's several, but they fly. They they're military aircraft. Are they Chinese or what are they? Do you know?
Unfortunately, those have nothing to do with us.
Okay, that's fine. I understand. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Any other questions for the Board of Commissioners before I go into the next step?
Thank you.
I was just, go ahead. Seriously. If you've got any more questions before I, I'm going to go into some things for y'all to try to help. Again, unfortunately, I want to start off with this. I use Facebook for funny stuff. I use Facebook to stay in touch with the public to see what their concern is. But some of y'all kill me, just to be honest. If you don't like me, don't vote me back in. I don't care. Right? I didn't sign up for this to make you happy. I signed up to make thirty thousand people's lives better. But some of y'all have washed y'all's minds, and it's got to stop. I mean, if you're just talking to hear yourself talk because ain't nobody else in the room, buy a new TV. But we are just like y'all. If you'll just remember, four years ago, you elected me because you didn't like the last guy. And you elected the guy before him because you didn't like the guy before him, and the guy before him. Well, hell, we can change seats. If you want to sit in this seat and let me sit out there and throw arrows at you, you'll figure out real quick like what you can and cannot control. This Board of Commissioners has done its very best. We just showed you numbers for four years and four years of rollbacks that we've done. We didn't have to. Senator Goode said in his video, there's counties in Georgia that took advantage of the economy and did not roll their miller rate back to settle on the next day. There's school boards in the state of Georgia that did not roll their miller rates and settle on the next day. And he said that was the reason that this bill came to be. But what he left out was Madison County, because we didn't do that. We rolled the miller rate back each year. Even the school board, six, was it sixteen or eighteen years, they did not roll their miller rate back. But when things went south over the past four years, they rolled their miller rate back, trying to offset what they collect. But for people on Facebook, I'm going to go in to some numbers with you so you understand where the numbers go. Because clearly, there's a lot of money that the county spends that we're mandated to spend. Unfunded mandates that comes from that gold dome that we have to pay. They're your tax dollars. On my door at my office, we ran it in the newspaper, there's a chart. It stays on my door even if I'm not here. It's on the outside. Stop by and look at it. It shows you where every penny of your tax dollars goes. Even if I'm not here, you get to see it. It's there. Eighteen dollars to the rec department. That's how much you contributed on, one thousand dollars. You can see it for yourself. It's there. So, and I'm going to start off with the most controversial. This is either mandates by the state or charter mandates. Is that the word? I wanted to use charter mandates because she told me that she didn't like my word. That's required. So our charter says we have to have a Board of Commissioners made up of five men and a chairman. The salaries on those are set by the state based off population. The COLAs, which are the races that these Board of Commissioners gets, is set by the state. They tell us what we get each year. That is four percent or three thousand dollars, whichever is less, is what we get. So this Board of Commissioners, mandated by the state, total, not just Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry, eight elected officials, which will be several others are in here, is a total of one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. Do the math, one hundred ninety-six thousand divided by eight people. I'm pretty positive. We ain't gapping nobody. Do the math. Elections, Board of Elections, eighty-one thousand dollars. That's for twenty-twenty-five. Last year, Board of Elections was two hundred and eighty thousand because it was a presidential year. That number varies. Eighty-one thousand eight hundred is what twenty-twenty-five is going to look like because we ain't got no elections. I think we've got one potential. Am I right? Coming up. But in that, eighty-one thousand dollars, what you'll find is three weeks worth of poll workers, including two Saturdays, a Dominion voting machine, which we were forced to buy, their voting machine. We're also forced to buy their service and their warranty through the state. We're also forced to buy their paper for their printer. We can't use our paper. It has to be a special paper. That paper was sixteen thousand dollars for last year's election. Now, this ain't, this ain't the Board of Commissioners pissing your money away. They know it's not doing math. This is facts. This is facts, right? The Tax Commissioner's elected. His salary, based off longevity, set by the state, is eighty thousand dollars. That does not include one office staff. That comes out of the general fund. This is mandates from the state. We're required, we're mandated to have a Tax Commissioner. Board of Assessors, mandated to have. Mandated employ a specific number. Ours is five. This is based off of how many appraisers also in that office is based off how many parcels we have in the county. It's one appraiser for every four thousand parcels, three thousand parcels, all right? That's why we got five. That dollar amount, one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. That don't include anybody else. That don't include gas. That don't include trucks. This was the mandate. We're staying on mandates. Probate Court, probate court mandated by the state. Everything in that office is mandated by the state. That's three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's what the budget to run probate court is. Keep in mind, we have one of the largest courts in our district. The only one that even comes close to us is Franklin County. Park County, no. Believe it or not, Elwood County, no. Overthorpe County, no. We run the second highest court of all of us. Juvenile Court costs us sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. Magistrate Court, that one's not mandated by the state, but if you have it, you have to mandate certain things to go with it. That one's three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Superior Court, mandated by the state, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. This is all coming out through a tax bill now. Parker Court's Office, mandated by the state, four hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Board of Equilations, county's required to have a Board of Equilations at twenty-twenty-five budget is thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars for it. Ain't something we can opt out of. We have to pay that bill. District Attorney's Office, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Sheriff's Office, you'll find this one ironic. Sheriff's Office is mandated for court security, civil serving papers, serving civil papers, executing arrest warrants. Sheriff is mandated to operate a jail. Total bill, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, I'm sorry, three million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Patrol officers are not mandated. I can walk, fire them all if you wanted to. But then who's going to come to your house when somebody's breaking in? That's just a jail. That's the mandated part. We've given you the mandated numbers. Several other things briefly. Cancer policy for fire, volunteer fire department. That was mandated by the state, twenty-three thousand. Just this past July, PTSD insurance, mandated by the state, fifty thousand. Hazardous mitigations, EMS, total bill, seventy-three thousand dollars. Another mandate. Not something we chose, not something we picked. A coroner is constitutional officer. You ain't got to have a coroner. But if you got one, you got to meet state mandates. It's around fifty thousand dollars between the corner calls and the trainings. Health Department, mandate to provide funding and equipment for the facility, one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Extension Office, county's mandated to provide for the service. Madison County utilizes UGA for oversight for personnel, seventy thousand six hundred. Libraries, again, mandate state benefits, cost us eighteen thousand six hundred dollars. I'm getting to the end, I promise. Believe this or not, non-essential employees are paramedics. We don't have to have them. But we got them. We got four stations of them, and we've probably got the best in the state. Now, one ambulance that we have, if it was me personally having a heart attack, I would be worried about who was working that ambulance because they are amazing. Just the mandated part. Because we have them, our ALS licensing, and we have to license our ambulances through the state, one hundred and twenty-four thousand because we got them. Transfer station, not a big deal. You ain't got to have it. But if you do got it, there's certain state mandates you've got to license, twelve thousand dollars. Public works, just a mandated part. EPD reporting for stormwater disturbance, a mandate comes from engineering maintenance and road infrastructures, eighty-three hundred dollars. Building inspection, towed enforcement, animal control, you ain't got to have them. But if you do got them, there's a mandate from the state. It's five thousand dollars to keep up the recertification CEUs mandated by the state because you have that office. Workman's comp, because we got employees, our workman's comp, two hundred and twenty-four thousand a year. Our insurance for employees is.
That's building vehicle insurance.
Uh, that's building vehicle insurance.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Our insurance, just to have the building, mandated, got to have insurance. Car insurance, got to be mandated, three hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars for insurance. Um, the big one here is our insurance, health, health insurance, which we shop each year. We shop them every year. And in four years, uh, we've actually cut our numbers, but we're down to two point six million dollars. Now, this is not a mandate, believe it or not. State of Georgia, the state of Georgia, it's a mandate to have state healthcare insurance. But if you're county government, you do not. But try to hire somebody, not offer an insurance, see how that works out for you. So, with that being said, the number Gary showed you a minute ago, this slide that I was pretty adamant everybody looked at several times, was we was at twelve million six hundred and four thousand dollars that comes from your tax bills. Our outgoing cost of mandates is eleven million sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So I've got one point six million dollars roughly left over out of your tax bill for everything else. Now I got to pay those paramedics. Now I got to pay those deputies on the road. Now I've got to staff the Tax Commissioner's Office. Now I've got to staff this office. Now I've got to staff some of Robin's people. See where the numbers go. Facebook. If I need to break it down for you, I can. And I ain't talking to y'all. I'm not trying to be sarcastic neither. I'm just really, really aggravated with social media and the misinformation that's been spread. These are real numbers. I can print you a copy, email me, come see me, whatever. I will show them to you, give them to you, take them and publish them wherever you want to. But the county operation budget, this is something you should be proud of also. Because if you didn't figure out, we just employed a whole bunch of people off one point six million dollars of your tax dollars. Our county budget is reaching about twenty-five, five, last year, twenty, twenty-four, because it was a twenty-four dollar. Twenty-five, five is our county budget. Now where does that money come from? Let me explain it to you. Grants and a lot of other things. We probably have gotten more grants over the past four years than probably the previous twenty put together. User fees, citations, code enforcement fines, rec sign-ups, whatever the case may be. All of these are going towards making up that deficit because there's a twenty-five million dollar budget. But remember, twenty, twelve, six is all we collect from taxpayers on property tax bills. Splosh, T-splosh, lost timber, TAVT, your car tags. That's how we make up the difference to run the county. So we're not operating on a daily basis. This Board of Commissioners, nor my clerk, nor any department head or any other elected officials, when you say you're work, you work for me, for mine, no one understands it. What you paid him to do was to pay the state, just so you know where your money goes. So while he does work for you and we will do our best for you, I just want you to understand where your money goes. That's why we've rolled back each year. Because, one of the reasons, we saw inflation going up. We saw a thirty percent increase, but yet we rolled the millage rate back. Why? Because we also saw more people spending money in this county. Not a whole lot more, but two hundred thousand here and a two hundred thousand there eventually adds up. TAVT, believe it or not, the economy sucks. I've seen a whole bunch of brand-new cars go through Daniel'sville lately. Well, that TAVT tax helps. So we appreciate it. Ford does too. Chevrolet does too. So realistically, between the grants, fees, splashes and law, the other splashes, the other incomes, that generates thirteen point eight million dollars. So we actually generate outside more money than we actually do on property taxes. So we're not living high on the hog on property taxes. And I want to close my portion of this and let the Board speak on anything they want to speak on. But I want to leave you with a couple of thoughts. And as regarding the state of Georgia, Governor Kemp is my friend. I'll make that clear, and I'll tell anybody. I don't understand what goes on at the gold dome every day. There's a couple hundred people on this house and a couple hundred people in that center. Trying to get a consensus is pretty tough to do. Do they all agree? No. Because most of them have to sacrifice, like this bill. This bill started as one thing and it turned into a twelve-legged ostrich. But if we were trying to do such a good job to help our taxpaying citizens on property taxes, why didn't, why didn't the state, why did the state cut off your five hundred dollar credit that you got last year? Why didn't they continue? Think about that. They got fifteen billion dollars of surplus. But they want your counties to take the hit when they could have just given you another five hundred. Next year, they could have gave you another five hundred until this housing settled back out. They've got a new administration coming. Things are supposed to settle out. But we could have done things at the Capitol to leave the counties alone. My next thought, if you want to help taxpayers, cut your state income taxes. Let them take home more money so they can pay the tax bill. But they don't. So if the state thinks it's so good of a job that we need to sacrifice as a county, a community, of a si, small city of Coller, Carlton, Comer, we should take the hit. Think about who really should take the hit. It ain't the taxpayers in this county. If the state's got fifteen billion dollars, we shouldn't have to sacrifice our county for that. So that's what I want to leave you with in my thoughts. I'm open for any questions. My office is open every day, eight to five, open-door policy. I ask you to call just to make sure I'm not in a meeting. Other than that, come on in. Don't ask to have a seat. Come on in and sit down. That's the way I operate, the way I've always operated. Transparency has been our number-one thing about this Board. This Board will tell you. You go to some other Board meetings, they don't really let you speak. They don't hear you out. And they don't do this kind of in-depth detail to try to explain as we've done. I fight this battle for passion. It's damn sure not for the salary. So I'll open the floor to any questions for me and/or this Board of Commissioners, and then I'll let the Board of Commissioners speak. But I would like, try to wrap it up before the snows.
I, go ahead. David here again. I don't really have a question. I just want to say that I support opting out for various reasons. And I think you all know my opinion of the Board. I think at a previous meeting, I expressed the, my appreciation for the fine job you all do. I think that the bill was ill-conceived. It lacked second-level thinking. And it was unfair to poor counties like ours. So I suggest that you opt out.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate Todd. Me and you have been friends forever. You show out the own different sides here. I, I don't see any benefit of opting out for a homeowner. And furthermore, your presentation is one-sided. You, you presented to the public, every negative there was, you didn't offer them the option of one positive. If you don't play the game, play it fair. That, that's one hundred percent every reason why you need to be out.
That is...
And once again, I don't understand why the homeowner, especially the older people, and I, I'll change my mind, and I'm a very vocal person. I'll go to opt out if you'll put in writing that you will do something for every old person that owns a house, everyone who's going to live in your county. What this county is hanging their head on is we farmers, and that ain't a fact. You need to sell business licenses and look at tax returns. You don't have but a handful of profitable farmers. What they do, they work another job to keep their farm where they can hand it down to their children while everyone who owns a home, you know, we going to put it on our shoulders and run with it and pay the taxes. You preach fair, we'll make it fair. That's all I want.
I agree with you, Scotty, on a lot of those topics.
Yeah.
I would love to be able to give you the pros side of it.
Yeah.
Problem is, is we just haven't seen the pros. The only pros that Department of Revenue stated to us. There's only been one meeting so far that the Department of Revenue's held that I'm aware of. Robin, have you been anymore?
Been there.
And the pros was, it's going to make your tax bill easier to read. And we, every hundred and fifty people in the room shook their head, looking at each other like, that's all you've got for a pro?
But a pro is, you're long-term citizens. Like, a lot of people been here for generations. In that bill, you can hand that property down to your children, and it's still locked in. I could, right now...
No, you cannot.
Not currently.
They are not going to... Well, they, they're going, it will be, my understanding correct.
Right, right now, it's just to your spouse.
Yeah, just to your spouse. But they're going, and kind of like y'all's hypothetical. Y'all give all the hypotheticals that are negative. Hypothetically, you're going to be able to handle it now. And that probably will pass. Maybe not. Maybe none of them will. But you, you're sitting there looking at an opportunity to help the people who need help. You got old folks, I'd say poor people. I don't care what you tax make. I couldn't care less. I'm going to pay it or move. That's how it's going to be. But you got to help the right people, not the people who can afford it. I own more than one property. One of them, I'm going to pay through the roof because this is rental property now. And my home is, you know, I can't, just find them with me. Just help the right people. And you, you don't get your money either way. I mean, it's, y'all, y'all can raise the millage and get it. Just help the right people.
Thank you, buddy. I appreciate it.
Steve May, and so you're saying that you want the state to control?
Please, I want to, I don't care. I just think, this has been right. The conversation needs to be directed in this direction. If y'all want to talk about it outside, that's...
Yeah, you have to.
So how are we, when are we going to end this vote? And so you got one more meeting and we can...
We have to have one more meeting.
Can we, who's voting, these people or how are you doing this?
The Board of Commissioners will close the public hearing, and we will then open a session of, to vote.
On the last meeting?
On the last meeting, yes. We'll probably have that meeting following the public hearing because we have a normal Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will vote in that meeting.
Okay.
So the next public hearing will only be between five, it's five P.M. To six P.M. At six P.M., we'll close the public hearing and open our regular business meeting. And at that point, we'll vote in that business meeting. Yes, sir. Back to that thing.
My name's Tony Chatham. Um, don't hold that against me. My address, fourteen sixty-one Old Hues Mill Road. I don't live in Madison County, but what he called the rental home is our dad's property that we're now having to pay taxes on. But what I didn't see, that I, I'm a numbers kind of person and I'm a visual person. I saw all the numbers that y'all have that are definite from the past three years, four years. Is there an estimated budget projection on income from each methodology that we can take and compare side by side? Even though one's going to be totally hypothetical. But there's got to be some, some way that y'all come up with the idea that one's better than the other.
Well, the, the way they, the way, what the state is structured is to do. They couldn't give us a formula. We asked for a formula, and the only thing the state says, literally, verbatim, it's your best guess, but if it was us, we would recommend you using a CPI of three years. And because we don't know the future, use your previous three years. I promise you, that's what was...
I mean, and I don't doubt that at all. If we're going to use that analogy, I want to ask the state, well, can we just use my best guess as what I owe in income tax?
Well, the...
Because my last three years, boy, has sucked.
So, so, so in reality, though, when they said, use your previous three years but basing it on three percent, they forgot to tell you that CPI hasn't been three percent for the past three years. CPI was two point nine, it was three point four, then it was six-two, and then it was seven-six.
But there's no projection whatsoever that anybody can give a graph or anything as to what this may do. They just grabbed something out of the air.
I tell you what to do. If you can find, if you can get that out of the state of Georgia and the Department of Revenue, I would appreciate it because I would love to see it.
And one other thing, while trying to get business and industrial, I still live in Jackson County. And regardless of what y'all do here, it's going to affect me because of our dad's property that we're, you know, we're in charge of now. But if you start getting industrial in here, perfect example is look at what Commerce did to us with S.K. Battery. You got to keep in mind the long-term effects because what they did up there is a cluster. And I ain't going to use the language I'm moving to.
Yeah.
But just keep in mind about long-term effects, not what's going to happen right now, but your children, your grandchildren, if they, if they're able to stay in the area. In Jackson County, my taxes have gone up, on average, twenty-two to thirty-four percent per year the last three years. I'm moving. I'm doing like he said. I ain't moving to Madison County because if this going to be shooting up, then I'd have to move again in the next two or three years.
Yeah. Hey, Todd, can you, can the Board give the older people, or people who are searching under, and I don't, I'm hypothetical. I ain't got a clue how y'all work and really don't. It ain't nothing like this. Can you come up with a plan to lock these people? Where people like me, I'm working, I, I should pay. I mean, that's the American way. But all the old people, the people who can't afford it, can you put a plan in place before you opt in or out? Or that's not...
There's, there's not enough time to get that together before March first because that, we're talking, what, ten more days? I don't even know what the day's date is. But yes, there's no way to get those numbers pulled together. That's why we've started pulling numbers already. But we would pull, we was asked to pull them to look at a seventy-and-older school exemption. We know what the L5s is, meaning seventy and older, I think?
Yeah.
Explain that part and what kind of process it would take. You can calculate the list and you can see what your potential losses is. But to actually get it formulated, because not only that, is we can get it formulated, but you still got to send it to your legislator to get it into the House so they would approve that voting home state, correct?
Yes, but no matter how I give...
So you still, my question, my, my point was, I can't get it done before the, the March first deadline.
But over the, over a ten-year period, your home values are going to outrun your inflation numbers, without a doubt. Year after year, the value of your home goes up a higher percentage than inflation. So you're better to lock them people in. They will have a lesser value irregardless over a ten-year. You can look back through history forever and it'll work out like...
If, if, if the national media is correct in their predictions, things should come back down. You don't want to lock in high and then be stuck high neither.
But if you lock the value right now, the home values are still going to outrun it.
Yeah, that's possible.
I, I've been on this Board about as long as anybody that's currently on it's been. And, you know, this has been looked at before as far as like older folks, like, I mean, you know, and, and getting that exemption, another home state exemption or doing something. But it's just never been one of those things that worked out. And it's always been sort of negotiations too with making it really good for folks. You got to be in negotiation with the Board of Education to get them to be part of that, okay? And that's, in the past, hasn't really worked out very well.
But you got a Facebook now. What you need to do is direct...
Yeah, well, let me, let me finish. Let me finish. So let me finish, and then, I mean, you've made a good point.
Yeah.
But what we, what, there's discussions going on even now that, just like Todd said, you can't get it done for a decision that has to be made on there. But there's, you know, folks talking about it, and especially in the Tax Commissioners and, and assessment and all those offices, about what we could do for some, some folks to try to bring something, just like you said, relief. Now, can I guarantee that's going to happen? No. But I personally, as one of the members of this Board, are going to do everything I can to try to make it happen. So you know, that's, that's where personally I'm at with it.
How long have you been there?
I mean, Todd, this is my, uh, what, six years on the Board.
But now a caveat is this, what was the Board of Education, right? So I, I'll tell you, two or three years ago, Lamar Dalton, Tax Commissioner, fought like a Dickens just to get a small reduction. He did. Things has changed in legislation, but we don't have to use that anymore. We have a different man at the helm. And we had that conversation prior to him setting and taking that job, and he was open to the discussion. And we've had a lot more discussion about it. I said coming in that I would like to exempt seniors seventy and older from school. I said that four years ago. I learned a little, how it was a little more complicated than just my decision. But now I do believe that it is going to happen at some point in the very near future. Now, what it's going to look like, I don't know. Right now, the more concern is... Right now, the more concern is, yes, we wanna do seventy and older, but at to what, to what criteria? For a guy that owns four hundred acres, or for a guy that's got an income of one point two million? We don't know the criteria, that what they're gonna put on it, nor what we're gonna put on it, or what we're all gonna agree on. But I can tell you that there is a roundtable coming, and there is potential, probably the best ever potential, of getting something done for our seniors. That's a fact. Derek Doster, anything, sir?
I mean, I think the question was raised, you know, can we put something right, and of course, not, you know, before we need to do anything. But I think the best proof is, you know, three, four years ago, we did approve, uh, you know, the L-five. And so, there's been, there's been proof positive that we have taken some action. Somebody might not think enough, and I understand that, but I, I think, you know, I think the conversation is a good one. And so, I, I think, again, like Mr. Kirk, I, I think the conversation is gonna continue.
Thank you.
Okay, another question.
Yes, sir.
A relay question. If you get a longer deadline, if they push that to the end of May, or if they push that out of here, we'll use angle, put together a proposal, uh, of the county.
If they can get it pushed out to May thirty-first, I think we could probably get a cons, a verbal consensus. I don't know if we can meet the meeting criteria for them to have theirs and us to have ours, and then get it to a legislature. But I think you'll, it, it probably will be an announcement to the newspaper, potentially, that a consensus has been reached, but not a formal consensus.
But that'd have to be a special conversation of legislature.
That's right.
That's not, you're gonna end it.
That's right. So, again, it wouldn't go into effect but later, but at least it would make a statement to the people and the citizens that the V O E and the V O C is on the same page. And, and, I'm not trying to drag you aside, I swear I'm not. But, but in defense of the Board of Education, one more time, they are capped on a twenty mil cap. Lot of circulation about why they're opting out. Well, they're opting out probably because of the, the other ninety-eight percent of the state of Georgia opting out also, because they have no other way for revenue from now to infinity. I've heard rumors about reserves, what they got. And I'll tell you what they got, they gotta build three new schools. And they're gonna be building them probably in the next five to ten years, where schools is gonna be twenty, thirty million apiece. And that's just for those three, the elementary schools. So it really doesn't matter what they got in reserve, as long as your child is educated, and you're in the top ten tier in the state of Georgia as a public school, I have a hundred and eighty-three schools, be damn proud of what Madison County Schools is doing. Don't worry about what they get paid. If your child is coming home educated, be proud of that. If it's not, take your concerns up with them. I agree with that. But the financial side of what that school over there does, and what they do it with, most of theirs is state-related also. Keep that in mind. The numbers I could give you tonight, they probably have a same list of what they have to meet. So, enough from me. Frank May, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kirk, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Mr. May?
Uh, no, I'm good today.
Mr. Chandler?
Uh, thank y'all for being here, thanks for calling us. Remember, the most important thing to keep your eyes on us is the budget that we set. You hold our feet to the fire and make sure that we're spending your dollars correctly. There are options, the way those dollars are collected. Property tax in general is the worst way in the world, guys. I don't like taxes, period, I like property taxes less. Hold our feet to the fire to make sure that we are, and, and there's some hard conversations being had on this side of the table. So have, have a degree of confidence in that, but, uh, thank y'all for being here, thanks for calling us.
Mr. Adams?
Here again, I'd like to echo Commissioner Chandler's comments. Thank you for coming out, because it's public opinion that's here that matters. Facebook is immaterial, that's social entertainment, as far as I'm concerned. But the public that speaks up is to, we really listen to and are accountable. I would encourage you to contact your local representatives and demand that the state stop underfunding or not, or passing legislation that's not funded at the state level. Uh, at the end of the day, mandated legislation is legislation without representation. And I would encourage that. There is a great deal of debate on this board regarding moving forward with this without having something in writing. And I believe I actually mentioned to someone here this evening, you know, if it ain't in black and white, it ain't. And, and at the end of the day, uh, I'm brought back to the old joke, I'm from the government and I'm here to help you. Don't ever believe that, you, you know. At the end of the day, that's it.
What comes on, all right, it's true.
And with what he just said, we ain't, we are the government, but we ain't, because you can have one of these seats in just any given election. It can be yours, in any seat, seriously. We are you, we're just representing bodies for you, we're not against you, we're with you. Uh, I remembered, Scotty, what I was gonna tell you a minute ago, when the goose said one more thing, I couldn't remember what it was. You were correct. Turns out, I'm just reminding me, when he said, if it ain't in black and white, it ain't.
Yeah.
When you said you couldn't find it in the bill anywhere that you could opt in later.
Yeah.
You were correct.
Yeah.
What Senator Goose kept saying was, well, you can opt in later, you can opt in later. But it wasn't in black and white, and you cannot opt in later, you gotta create your own.
Hey, I do got a question, and this is for the farmers. The way this law is written, when your call, when your property is under conservation, how big a break do you get versus if you put your whole property, because you can put your whole property on their home state, does it make it equal out? I don't know how much a home state exemption is versus a conservation, and if you did that, they're not tied up for ten years or whatever anymore.
The only unfortunate part is, we do, we're pretty confident that they're gonna limit that to five acres. We're pretty confident, based off of Woolbury being told by our House Representative members, that it is going to be limited to five acres. They really wanna take it for one, but I think the consensus they've all agreed on until they get to the votes for these five. But, any other questions before I ask for adjournments? Thank you all for coming, thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate every bit of it. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, guys.
How you been?